What is the date of July 21st, 2025? Um, we have had some issues with our YouTube and I know we've had some internet issues as well. So some of the previous meeting was recorded, some of it was not. Uh, I know earlier we were having some issues as well. That is out of our control and we do apologize for anybody that is watching um from outside this room. Doing the best we can with that. Okay, um, uh, we've already gone through, I think we can carry this forward. We've had our indication and replaced team flag. Um, everyone is still present. So let's go to the first one that we have on our agenda. Uh, we need to table this commission. So if I can get a motion to table the setting of the tentative maximum mileage rate.
I move that we table the session on April 25th and the 4th, setting the maximum range rate for the tax report business.
I'll say a hand hand.
Until.
Until July 31st.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. Do we have any discussion?
Um, yes, ma'am, I have a request. Um, I mentioned this to the city manager and the resolution is drafted. There are two different dates for the deadline. So if um they can get that um corrected before the um.
Okay, it needs to be August 4th. It is August 4th and not August 5th. So it is the August 4th, so it will be last, then now therefore you would please correct that for the record. August, it needs to be August 4th and not August 5th. For what now?
Well, here, you don't have a reservation.
It's the, it's the text of the resolution. It just, it's the text of the resolution. I think it has to be to D O R by, by no later than August 4th.
Right, it's just inconsistency, ma'am. I think August 5th was the date last year and so it just didn't get um replaced.
And also it needs to say that it's statute 23/6.
Yes? Oh, my goodness. Definitely need a correction.
Okay, so if we have a proper motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. No, nay. Okay, so tabled. So now we're going to go to the Blue Ribbon Committee discussion.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, for the record, I'm Dan Dodge and the chairman of the Blue Ribbon Committee and I reside in 218 South Main Street. So today I'm with you again to request an extension of time for the Blue Ribbon Committee of 15 months. As I explained at our previous meeting, we find that's necessary because we still have a big deal of work to do. There are three major objectives uh that we, we need to achieve. Uh, the first is to have uh move forward with the discussion uh with the school district on a letter of understanding of the possible transfer of the uh Miller Middle School uh to the city. Um, a letter of understanding and to bring such a concept or letter before this commission. Uh, the second is uh for uh grant writing. Uh, as we know from our past experience, taking a year, uh working on grants is, is the proper way of doing this. And um, and, and lastly, it's finding partners that uh will help participate and be part of the uh, of the finished product. Um, as, as you all know, there are five buildings there. The city's uh needs can be accommodated in the administration building, building number one, primary first floor. That gives a great deal of square footage for possibility of other uses. Uses that um will make it financially viable. Uh, uses that um will uh add additional benefits to the city. So that's what we seek. Um, and we recognize that uh doing nothing, that the, the school board doesn't want the building. They are quite eager to work with us, the city, uh to, to do a transfer. But that needs to be discussed. And as you remember, uh, we brought forward a contract and he let us know at that time that a letter of understanding would be much more appreciated. Uh, so that can be, that can be achieved by just taking a few elements out of the long document contract that we first proposed. Um, the um, the other is that there's great need for the city. We understand that this building um has major structural issues that need to be addressed. And um, and of course, the other is, is if we do nothing, then we have a fear of it just being a dead space and deteriorating. And that's not going to benefit anyone. So those are my comments uh this morning and I look forward to a discussion with you about it.
Commissioner, does anyone have any questions with Mr. Dodge?
Let me also point out too that, that the Blue Ribbon Committee needs twice a month. The total time per month that we average is only an hour and a half. So our meeting really is minimalist expense. There are five members, uh plus Commissioner Laurie is, is an advisor. And we're very fortunate that each one of us bring a separate experience and talent. We work very well independently at our missions. And the, the um, coming to the guidelines of um, of um, not uh, the sunshine law is easily uh, easily, uh, it's an easy task for us. It's, it's, it's not a problem uh at all because we work independently. We, we each have an assignment. And then the, the important of meeting, of course, is to bring the, um, each of our ideas and what we discovered together. So, and I, I want to remind you that we work, we exist because of your pleasure. You control us. So we, we need your approval basically for everything. Um, and that's, we appreciate that. So what's our purpose? Our purpose is to do the groundwork for you. To, to provide the necessary free hours and legwork to bring the reports to you to make decisions.
Um, there for discussion purposes, I would like to make a motion.
Can I say something first?
Let her, don't, let, let her do her motion.
Okay, well, we can have. I was gonna say usually we make a motion that says she's. Okay, so um, I would like to make a motion um that the city, Crescent City, extend the um Blue Ribbon Committee and their charge um and for until the end of fiscal year 2026.
Commissioner, a second.
A second, aye.
Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. Yes, Commissioner, I apologize.
Okay, I guess I'll press this down anyway. Um, I just want to say, um, that I had some taxpayers and some city residents to approach me with this. And I just want to give some, I want to let you know what they said, okay? As far as Miller Middle School being renovated, they have no problem. I don't think any of us had a problem with that. But they have a problem with the money. Also, they wanted us to, they'd like me to address this, that um concerned citizens are very um, well, they are thinking about um how they have been on hold for that Masana Hall for a long time. And I think it's been there since 2020, 22, 20, 20, 21, 22, or something like that. But they did not come to the commission for anything. Um, it's like they've been on their own trying to get funds. And what they really need is a grant writer. So you all have grant writers, so they really need that person. And they want, I need to express that because um they're saying, um, basically, um, I guess they would need help too. So we really need to help them. That's another issue. And also I want to say that Middleton Burning, um, school will be closing very soon, in the next end of the year, beginning of the year. And that is another, uh, well, this Masana Hall is a historic uh site and you all probably read, wrote about that. And um, we have history in that too also. My grandmother died when she was 190, I think, oh yeah, 199, was a member of the um Eastern Star that went upstairs in that building. So it is um historical. But I would like to know before we make the decision, um, are we willing to also extend um help to these, these other organizations?
Okay, well, ma'am, could I add to that?
Yes.
Because I've been on the commission since the Newman Lodge issue came up. And essentially, um, it was because of the Throughrun Peninsula Historical Society and the late Mr. Jim Stakey, who is the retired architect, that the um need to preserve the Newman Lodge was brought up. Um, the interim city manager at the time had that on a fast track schedule to be torn down. Okay, I made a point as a member of the Historical Society and somebody um who's very aware of the importance of the Newman Lodge, especially um, you know, that Newman Lodge um was very important in the historic African-American part of town, which my family lived two and a half blocks from there. And my granddaddy used to deliver babies down there, including families who lived there. So very, very, um, sorry, ma'am, I digress. So uh essentially, um, the concerned citizens, the Historical Society, um, I was very concerned about this. Um, we took the Newman Lodge, the city did this. We took it off the demolition list. I believe the mayor was very involved in reaching out to the concerned citizens. They have an interest in this. Um, sadly, uh, Mr. Redd wanted to apply for a grant to restore the Newman Lodge, but um some things happened and the commission didn't do it. If we had applied to legislature that year as we, the commission voted to, um, then some of the citizens didn't want to. The state for they used ARCMAN and funded $60 million of uh re, of restoration for African-American buildings around the state. We didn't get that because we didn't put that patient. So we have met with concerned citizens. They have talked about their fundraising. What the city has done for Newman Lodge is very significant. We committed ARCMAN funds for the architectural study of that building prior to the funds that were committed for the Miller Middle School. So um, and another thing we did was um, and this was before we took it off the demolition list. Um, we made sure the building was boarded up. Um, we made sure the sheriff's office was aware of it. Uh, I know the mayor has been very involved in organizing concerned citizens for cleanup. But anyway, the city has committed um the ARCMAN for the architectural study and as well. Um, before Mr. Red left, this commission voted um to apply to the state for that for a small matching grant for the money we need to do the architectural plans for that building. For, to do the construction documents. So we are basically underway with that. And our budget for the current fiscal year, I think the small matching grant is $50,000. We budgeted it, this year's budget, for the additional $10,000 that would be needed to do those architectural plans. So we are on board there. We, we have been admitted to that. And as well, um, I have brought up, you know, we have an interlocal agreement with um the county and the school district. And I think I brought up earlier, this commission here, that given that Middleton Burning is going to be taken offline, um, we need to address that then as well. I talked to one of the people um who's doing the current historic survey, you know, we're redoing our historic survey. Um, and I asked her if they were including um Middleton Burning and that hasn't been done. You know, that's um Paul Weaver and um Jenny Wolf. Um, they did not go that far outside of the um existing historic district. But the city, I believe in and of itself, would have the ability to declare that building a historic structure. I think we could do that on our own without it necessarily being in a historic district. So we could, we could discuss that. So um Newman Lodge, um, we've done as, that's what we've done. And we're actually farther ahead with Newman Lodge than we are with the school.
You know, I don't see where we're ahead at all. I'm sorry, I don't know, you guys looking at it are totally different than I am. I know we put in there, I, I know that we put in for some uh grant and I believe uh we did not get that grant.
Yes, that's, that's not correct. That's, we had on the small matching grant list for this year and it was funded. And so we should be getting order from the Department of State fairly soon.
Well, then before I would make that statement that we have that fund, then, then let's get it in hand first. Because it's been a long time coming. And you know, I just don't uh, you know, I like money in my hand before I say I got it. There's, there's the first problem. Um, but I brought this up a, a little while ago. I mean, this is a project that we put some money into it. We, we did get uh the engineer, R E G came back and they said, hey, we can do this for you. Uh, they gave us a presentation on how it would look after it was done. It was just, it was really spectacular, you know, and, and everybody got really excited about it. Uh, and then now it just sits. But let me tell you, that, that particular uh, um, the money needed to do that particular plan is, I think, and, and I, I think I'm right, but I, but I might be wrong because I'm, I, I, I can't quite remember. But I think it was only about $2 million. If someone can correct me on that. But it's a whole lot less money than the 22, 25 million dollars that we would need to actually do this whole school thing, which by the way, doesn't include how much it would cost to, to purchase the school. And, and so, you know, I, I'm a little bit with you, okay? I understand the frustration of, of uh your, your group and um, but I, and I don't know what's going to happen to uh the Bernie school. I don't think anybody does. I, I was under the impression, I talked to somebody not long ago, and the school has something in mind for it, but I don't know how far that will go. Um, and right now, money's tight. I mean, it's tight for everybody. Uh, I will give uh the, the concerned citizens of, you know, a big hand because they have been trying to raise money on their own. Uh, and I'm not sure how much money they raised, but they've really, they've really been putting an effort into uh achieving this goal themselves and, and I give them of, you know, private money and those kind of things. But anyway, that's, that's my take, okay?
And then, and they did to their benefit. They, they go out and they formed as, as a group, they formed a 501(c)(3) so that they could, so they could raise funds and they could add, um, and trying to secure what needed to be secured for that, for that building. Um, I, I, that's, I think in the last meeting, that was some of the discussion that, you know, I brought up is um, if, I think that that would be an idea for the committee. We've never, you know, very, very appreciative of the time and effort that y'all have put into this. And I think we've come a long way in what we have, the knowledge we've gained based on um, you know, your input. And, but I also think that you as a group um could be very powerful if you were working um separate from us and, and you were out there trying to solicit um donors and, and, and funds. And you can't do that together. So if you go to meet with anybody, you can only meet um one-on-one, yes?
Okay.
Finish my idea. I need to finish my idea. Um, so I think that, you know, and, and that's just my opinion, that, that that would, that would be to do that because there's power in numbers and, you know, that would give you that opportunity um to talk to people. That's basically, I mean, down in Seville, you know, you could go, as a group, you could go talk to them and, and find out what they did. Um, and how they were able to secure that building for a private entity that's, you know, is a 501(c)(3). But how were they able to do that? How were they able to get the funds um in order to do? And they just secured some, some major funds. Now there's, I believe, a Volusia County funds, grant funds that Volusia County gave them. They applied for, but they had to do that. Um, I just think that, that that would be at this point in time, that that would be um, I, I just think that would serve your purpose, in my opinion, better than, than continuing to be um advisory task. So Commissioner, if you'd ask. Thank you for allowing me to finish.
I'm sorry, it just, you mentioned something that I had on my mind since the last episode. So it kind of jumped out at me. Um, okay, I, I don't understand um why the B R C can only solicit donors and um funding um if they're a private group. I, I think Mr. Dodge just said that they each have their assignments and they can go out um individually. And then if there's something that the group needs to vote on, they can, they can vote on that. Um, and I do want to share with you that to me, um Pearson and Seville are at its origins because the Seville school, Seville is not incorporated. Um, and I, I read about that and what they did. Um, Seville is not incorporated, so they're not in charge. That is the um, I think the Seville Improvement Association, a nonprofit that owns that building. Seville is, their improvement association is not the entity that is in charge of planning and zoning for that area. That's Volusia County. So Pearson is the more comparable entity. And Pearson, um, it's in the Blue Ribbon Committee Research Book. They have already looked into this and um I took the opportunity to chat with the Pearson deputy clerk. Um, the Pearson School Building is 100 years old. The report says they essentially, the Volusia School District sold um six acres to them for $74,000. And they have, I don't, I'm not saying to me, I have not reached a firm conclusion that anyone use of Miller Middle School is best. But um the Pearson deputy clerk said they bought it, uh, the building and six acres for $74,000. They renovated enough of the old building to move the city hall offices into, and I think maybe a county office. And that the residents are very happy with it because it's a beautiful, like our middle middle school building. It's a beautiful building. Um, and they are happy that they took that opportunity because it's right in the center of their town. And they did what um Mr. Gonzalez from R E G Architects specifically recommended to us. If you look in one of the last documents that Mr. Gonzalez gave us, he gave us the $29 million is the cost to fully build out um the entire five buildings of the Miller Middle School over time for the complete adaptive reuse. That would be if you did every um change, every interior, exterior, everything to create that media center, which that's not even what we originally had in mind. Um, the auditorium, the main building, that's a long-term plan. The short-term plan for five buildings, and that's why I'm here with budget options. Um, so on page 43, for all five buildings together is 1.5 million dollars. And what Mr. Gonzalez, who um is very expert in redevelopment, he recommended that we start, and by we, he, you know, wasn't going into the weeds of who and what, that we start with one building and try to get a use for that. So my recommendation to the commission, the reason I think we should extend the Blue Ribbon Committee is particularly because we are poor now. We are poor and the county is poor. The B R C is free help. They are free help. We have spent the money for the architectural report. And Commissioner Burton, that's why I say the Newman Lodge is technically in process, is ahead of where Miller Middle School is because it's had its architectural report that the city paid for. And now the funding is coming online from the Department of State. Um, and we were told at the um redevelopment conference that our, our project made a cut. And it's coming online for funding for the, for the architectural plans. And that is a great thing because when you have the architectural plans, then the city and concerned citizens and anyone else can go out and ask for grants or ask for inkind donations. But anyway, we need free help. Um, and I think you need to think of it as, um, did anyone read the amendment that I passed out? Okay, so right now, the school district owns this building, although we do probably still own two streets and we have reverter rights and a piece of the property. To what extent, we don't know. Um, we are the entity responsible for planning zoning in Crescent City. This is 13 acres in the middle of town, well, round 12, so 12.7 ton. It's in the middle of town. It abuts our CRA. It is part of a residential community. I think we need to look at our risks and opportunities here. The risk is if the city, and what I showed you is, this is a conceptual ownership and control concept. If you, if we do our job as planners and zoners, and if we do our job, that's why we have a community redevelopment agency. We are the community redevelopment agency board. We are supposed to look out for account development interests in the city. If the city does not become a temporary owner, if we do not take ownership from the school district, then the school district can do anything with it that they want. There could be undesirable uses out there that would negatively affect the residential neighborhood to the south, the residential neighborhoods to the north, and as well, our commercial district that our main street organization is tying so hard to revitalize. Um, and one of Mr. Gonzalez's recommendations to me is that we should amend our central CRA to include um the school property because it is a redevelopment project. It needs to be repurposed from its use. So if we do nothing, we run the risk that someone may approach the school district with a very adverse use and we may not have the powers um to do anything about that. The opportunity is um for no money, we can have the Blue Ribbon Committee continue its work to look for people who would like to occupy it and bring funding. And I would remind you that we have had one local business person and two nonprofit entities come before us. And I would remind you that we have had one local business person and two nonprofit entities come before us. I think that we are cutting ourselves off and putting ourselves in a bad position if we don't let these folks go forward. I don't think it disadvantages what we're doing with the Newman Lodge at all. And I've had people come to me and say, talk about uses that we need, including, well, people from every walk of life and every race. I've had local businesses, I've had entities that are interested in use activities. So the bottom line is, the BRC does not cost us money. We, we've done everything right so far and I don't know why we would open ourselves up to.
Can you say something?
Sure.
You're kind of going on and on and on about how it doesn't cost us any money, it doesn't cost us. It does cost us money, but, but let me just say this.
How?
It, it costs us money. Now, let me, let me just say this.
How?
Every meeting that you have in this hall costs us money. It costs us money in staff, it costs us money in electricity, it costs us money in time, okay? That's what, we've already given $123,000 for you guys to kind of get started. I think that's a pretty good, pretty good start. The same way that we gave it to the Blue Moon Lodge. Okay, we gave them a certain amount of money to, to get everything that they needed to bring it forward and they're doing it on their own. It, it's so much easier to, to form, okay, a nonprofit and go forward than it is to always come back to the city, back to the city, back to the city. You're gonna have to come back to the city anyway, you know, eventually, eventually to do those things that you like to do. And, but you need to control it. We don't need to control everything that's happening with this school.
Maybe you won't control the important components.
No, the, the.
And our, and it would, we operate highly efficiently. It is, we don't need a group of us to approach potential partners. We're fine doing it one, one-on-one. And, and in addition, as far as the Miller Lodge, we fully support it. In any way that we can help them, we'd be happy to do so. But for us to be disbanded or to have to re.
Just an advisory committee.
To, to reorganize as a.
Then it's all you are, right?
Exactly.
An advisory committee.
It'd cost nothing, hardly anything for us to continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Laurie has something to say to the level. Commissioner Laurie, speak.
Yes, the, the BRC is an advisory committee to us, to the commission. We appointed them, we created them to help us through this process because this commission is not able to be doing that kind of stuff. We don't have other stuff to do. All this work that they've done, all of the expertise that they have, was necessary to come and bring this information to us. They've done that. They do that, it's an investment in the future. When we look at, you gotta look at something of really long-range scope here. This project is not something that's gonna be done in five years or 10 years or 15 years. I don't think any of us are probably gonna be here by the time it's fully realized. But we have to look at the future and plan for that. All of everything that's, you know, they always say, good things come to those who wait, okay? And nothing big ever happened without getting started. We can't just say, oh, we can't do this now. We need to look at the long-term, come up with a way to make it there instead of keep trying to uphold into that every moment and put as much of the effort into making it accomplish, accomplishing this and finding partners. But the BRC is pennies on the dollar for what we could possibly getting and what this school could be and what this property could be to the future of our community. And I don't think that, you know, the money that we've spent is just a small down payment on what will be able to get paid off in the long run.
Well, we, right now, we, we still don't own it.
No, because we haven't, we haven't been able to talk to the school district. And nobody has had that dialogue, but after I tried to do that a year ago.
You could, you could do that as a 501(c). You could go talk to them and put, you can go in and say, hey, I'll, I'll give you five bucks for that school. Whatever you wanna do.
They used to absolutely 501(c). See, hence the problem is, Panda County has had a history with that. They transferred the Campbell Building to Platte to a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) called the Edge for, whatever, Panda County Edge, and they sold that piece of property later on for way more than they got it, that they for from the school district. And then that triggered an Inspector General investigation from the state of Florida Department of Education. They are not going to do that again because they've already been borrowed and for good reason. They, but they will transfer it to another local government. That is accepted, that is something that's been done, it's done all the time. That's what happened in Pearson, with the, the school there. And the Volusia County, Panda County are two different entities. I'll tell you what, Panda County is not going to give that school or sell that school to anybody that's a 501(c)(3) because they already got their hands on it.
I think they'll sell it to anybody that will pay for it. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Go to the other.
I'm sorry, could Commissioner Burton please repeat for comment? I think that they will sell it to anybody that will pay for it. Okay, and that, right. So this is my concern about that, as I've said before, when I was going on and on. So if the school district sells it to anybody who will pay for it, what will happen to the auditorium? I believe there are people downtown who are hoping that the auditorium can eventually be used. And we had somebody right here in this room saying that they have immediate interest in using it. That auditorium historically has been a catalyst for activities in downtown.
It's all, it's all good and we all understand that here in Crescent City.
Right.
But you know, the city itself, okay? We will always be there and always be behind an organization that wants to move forward and take that particular piece of property where you wanna take it. We, we will always be behind that and we will always help, you know, hey, if you need this and need that, we will help. But I don't think that the city wants to take this on as a, a, a major project right now.
Okay, but Commissioner Burton, the, the part that we are disavantaging ourselves by is two holes. Number one, you just said you're fine if the school district sells this property to anybody.
I guess I was fine then.
That's not what I said.
That's not what I was.
I'm gonna, I will say that, Commissioner De Vito, because you do that a lot. And, and she did not, no, she did.
So you mean, what that, I mean, if this will, that is for sale right now.
What she, what she said.
And all I'm saying is the school will sell it. They will sell it.
That's what she said.
Right.
So to anybody that would be willing to pay for it.
Okay.
But not that she supported that. I never heard that. I apologize, Commissioner De Vito, but that's, it's your interpretation of what she said. My interpretation is different. She said they would sell it, she feels like they probably would sell it to anybody.
Okay, so that's good, I got clarification on that. So a threat is, and a danger, if they sell it to anybody, there is nothing to keep anybody from tearing down the auditorium. There is nothing to keep anyone from tearing down the gym, which, by the way, I thought we had prior discussions that that would be a great asset for community recreation. So there's nothing to prevent anyone from tearing down those buildings. And they have been identified as major assets for economic redevelopment in Crescent City. There's nothing to prevent, and we need to be very cognizant of this. One of the best things we can do for those residential neighbors surrounding downtown is to investigate at least a letter of agreement. Does not mean we spend any money. It gives us planning.
It does because we have to, we have to, we have to buy the lawyer to do it for you, you know?
Well, maybe.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, that, that, that's, that's a, yeah, everything's a small amount.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, I'm not, I'm not done here.
So we, we spend, it is, it is a small amount. We spend $50,000 a year right now for our Main Street organization. I don't think it's in our best interest to just let the abutting property that is incredibly beautiful, that has the opportunity to complement our Main Street area, that has the opportunity, as we talked about before and people here have talked, to provide recreation for our young people, which is, but to it on a whole different scale than any other property we have left in the middle of the city. We need to make sure that we're good stewards of it. We've spent quite a bit of money on economic development in Crescent City. To, percentage-wise, this isn't much more. And my fear is, well, BRC is mainly free except for city staff. If this property is purchased by an outside interest who wants to put it to a use adverse to the business district for the residences, we will be spending money on our planners and potentially our lawyers. We will be spending money. This is the lowest-cost thing we can do right now. And as well, we're saying we don't have the money to develop it. That is the point of the BRC.
Okay, let me get back, let me say one more thing.
Yes.
Okay, we, we, y'all been together for a year now. Really, you've been working at this for a year.
Correct, just over.
And, and within this year, okay, probably five months ago, I suggested that you start some kind of foundation so that you can start bringing in people, okay, to, to help support the idea.
Burton.
So you, partners, exactly. So you've had a whole year to at least get a list or some kind of agreement with people that would, okay, come in and say, hey, if, if, if you do this, city, we have this, this number of people, okay, that certainly will support this with X number of dollars or whatever they wanna give so that, that, you know, we could have some, some type of means to get started, okay, as a partnership. I don't see where that's necessarily happening. I just don't. You still are acting like a committee. You're acting like a committee, advisory committee. And I think the job that you've done as an advisory committee is done. It's done.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yes.
We, we are meeting as a committee because that's what we were set up as, as a committee.
Yeah, you're done now.
And what we've done is.
I'm done.
And we did start approaching, approaching partners and then I was told that I'm not allowed to talk to people. And we were chastised by the mayor and this commission. And so we stopped talking to anyone, even though it was just exploratory conversation with friends. I was told I wasn't allowed to do that. So.
I don't think that's true.
That is true, that is very true.
Okay, you're not allowed to do that together. You're not allowed to do that. Okay, so when you have the school director.
President Pickens, and you, and you told me I wasn't allowed to do that.
I figured, okay. Well, I did call ourselves a commission and all that to do that, except for, except for the sunshine appearance.
I was by myself, that's not sunshine, that we've all talked.
Oh, I, you were absolutely right, you were absolutely right because he said that you were speaking, I guess, on behalf of the commission.
No, I did not.
And so that, I said, that we could not speak.
President Pickens, I told President Pickens.
On behalf of the commission, but we had not.
And in person, I told him, and he knows that, even on all the houses in that. Because I was never speaking before the commission. And anytime I talk to anyone, I make that disclaimer at the very beginning.
Okay.
So I, I, I make sure that I don't overstep my bounds.
And maybe I misunderstood, and maybe I misunderstood. So if I said that to you, Commissioner Laurie, I have to apologize, maybe I misunderstood that. I think ultimately what, in my opinion, what it comes down to is, this is, to me, it's about, it's about dollars. And, and Commissioner De Vito, thank you for talking to Pearson. I actually spoke to one of the commissioners in Pearson about them moving into the school building and what we had going on here. And I was basically told one away from it. That, and I said, really, that you have, yes, that it's, it's not everything it's cut out to be.
Okay, I'm not married to that idea.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, that's just something that was, that was related to me. For me, it comes down to, it comes down to dollars because school district, yes, they might give it to us. How do we maintain that school? I mean, you, you sat through a workshop, most of you just sat through a workshop where we're saying it's only the essentials right now. That's where we are, we're only at the essentials. And, and then you're telling us that you don't want to raise, you know, the millage that's gonna actually raise taxes, well, in order for us to do any of this. Honestly, it's gonna have to go back to the people, in my opinion. That would my vote would be, is it would have to go back to the people and this community would have to vote to say, we're willing to pay for this. And I think that's where, that would be my recommendation. If we do anything with it at this point, that we give it to the people and say, are you ready? Are you ready to pay for this? Is this what you want?
We don't know either what that number is. And you're, you're just saying, ask the people to pay for it. Or is it a $200,000?
We know it's gonna be, we know it's gonna be. We know it's gonna be.
I need, I need everyone, we have to prioritize the minutes are there. I just want to talk to you.
The only way to know is to allow us to proceed and to do more research and to talk to people. And this kind of thing does not happen overnight. One year is a fifth of the amount of time that it would take to do a project like this. This has always been a long-term goal. I, I don't think that, you know, you're expecting things to just fall out of the sky and happen or not happen, and that's not the way this kind of thing works. You've worked, you have, you've been in government, we've all been in government for a while. Nothing happens quickly, does it?
Okay.
Remember, when you have one government working with another government, it's twice as long.
So, what, what I say is, your concern is about money. And I told you, I'm not, I think it's too soon to come to any kind of conclusion about exactly what is most beneficial to go in there. Again, this is the commission's responsibility. This is a redevelopment issue. Right now, I think it's fine to ask the people, are you okay with this? But if we allow our free volunteer help to go forward and investigate funding, take, have meetings, take expressions of interest from local entities who may be willing to come up with funding. 12 acres is a lot different than a single building. I think the cheapest and most economical thing to do is to go ahead with our free help. There's no need to spend money in this tight budget year. There is a need to proceed with the planning. At the end of the planning, then, we might be in the happy position of telling the people of Crescent City, hey, we have a consortium of groups, private and public, that would like to come together. And it would take a minimal investment from the city of Crescent City. But I, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice and we're opening ourselves up to potentially a Pandora's Box. And we might have planning costs that we would find would be a very heavy charge on our budget and/or legal costs, and we might have neighbors who are, are not too happy. And I don't really see, I wanted to ask Commissioner Moore, do the people who talk to you, do they feel like we're ignoring the Newman Lodge? Did, I mean, do they feel like continuing to look into the Miller Middle School, that that will hurt what is potentially gonna happen with the Newman Lodge?
Well, I'm not seeing that, but they're saying that it should be equal. You understand what I'm saying?
Commissioner Moore, would you pull your mic down a little more?
She's got it right there, she's got it right there. Yes, she's got it right there.
Hard up here.
Okay, I'm saying that the people, you know, that they're saying that it's not equal to them. If, if you're gonna do it on one side, you gotta do it on all sides, because, you know.
Right, so we are.
It's a process right now.
Right, it's a process and my, my, my concern.
Well, well, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why is the rush because it's taking such a long time, you know, for the other group to get something? And I know that pretty soon that Middleton Barney Schools don't come up again. I've seen parts of that school being destroyed. It was built, it was really torn down, okay? So for us not even to start discussing that now, see what we're gonna do with that, while we got everything else, and everything is gonna be sitting there anyway, the way I see it. So I, I don't know what we can do to make this a fairground because I've had a number of people I talked to, they probably should have been here or whatever, but I'm just, I'm speaking to what I was told, okay? And I said that I would say something about it, so. And I said that I would say something about it, so...
Well, as I said, the, the Newman Lodge in terms of funding for historic preservation, um, the city, the city took ownership?
Okay, let me say this. They're saying that they didn't get any help, okay?
I'm sorry?
They didn't ask for help. As far as coming up with the, the other money, you know, it's, it's taken them, you know, it's, it's a match, um, the grant is a matching grant, is that correct?
What, what's the answer?
No, no, not, not the, the fifty thousand, not just the pipe work. It's all the small matching grant, but we don't have to match because we're an RDI and made sure you said, it's fifty thousand dollars from the state and that we have, I don't, we have allocated ten thousand from the other place to finish the construction. I'm sorry, I'm, I can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, I'm good, you go ahead, you won't hear.
Um, so it is, we're waiting to get information from the state. It was approved in this last budget round. So the next step is to get those construction documents done because then you'll have plans to go and seek out grants to pay for the construction of the building. There's the steps that you have to follow. And we've, we've applied, I mean, the first thing we applied for was the Newman Lodge for that next grant as soon as we got the last, um, report done, that architectural report. So as soon as it was done, I helped Charles run, fill out that application and get it done last year. So it takes, I mean, this is how long these, these kind of things take. These cycles do. I mean, I would love to go work on Newman Lodge right now and, and, you know, finish them, fix the back of it. Because I'm, I go by it all the time and I'm very concerned about its, its, you know, structure. But, I mean, this is...
I'd like to call the question, please.
I, you can't do, that's not...
Don't be trying to be my problem.
That's not how that works, we're all in this order.
We can't do that, I haven't agreed with that from public, from public comment yet. But thank you. But I do want to say, I do want to say this, is that, um, you know, Commissioner DeVito, I, I appreciate what you say about, you know, it's, it's a free advisory committee and they are doing this. But I would hope that, and they know they, they've got our support. I feel like we have said that we've, we've given them our support. We asked, we actually established this because you asked us that. We would support something happening there. But I also think that, and I would hope that this committee, if we said at this point, thank you, now, set up your own foundation, set that up, that they would do, they would have that same charge and that they would do what they could to protect that school. Because I think ultimately each and every one of them is very passionate about that school. And so they would do, let me finish, that they would do what they, um, feel like was their charge to begin with and that they would do what's in the best interest of the city. I would hope that they would. And we've never said that if we disbanded them at this point, they could not come back to us with these recommendations and get our support.
Okay, but there's...
We've never said that.
There's a problem here.
And what is the problem?
The problem is that why, it makes no sense for people to put in so much time and effort if the school district can just at any given moment sell this property. But if you want to compare what's happened with Miller Middle School and Newman Lodge, the city took ownership of Newman Lodge. The city owns it and they did that to protect it. Newman Lodge was being vandalized to the point of destruction. And that was why the city took ownership there and, you know...
But, but we're here, we, we don't know. That's the thing is too, is we don't know from the school district, we don't know that they can give that property to us. We don't know that the school board is willing to give that property to us.
We don't know if we can talk to them.
And, and you can't talk to them, why you can't talk to them? You know why? Because I didn't say, no, you can't talk to them because you went in with another member and you can't go speak to them with another member of the committee. And so, and that's, and that's where it's at. If you did not have this committee, you could go meet with them. You could, all of you could go sit down with them. We sat down with them. And so that's it, that's all I'm going to say about it. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Commissioner, for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you.
I would like to ask Mr....
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. And thank you for your time and your service.
Right. I didn't intend to speak, but I'm... All right. I'd like everyone to take a deep breath and we'll think about the big picture for just a moment. And I, and I appreciate it when, when you do speak, if you pull that mic down, take a breath, and then I can hear that. I appreciate when you do that. All right. The school district owns the property. We all understand that. They would like to be not in the possession of the property. They would like it to be in the hands of the city. Now, the city can accept it from the city, you know, through some negotiations where the school district is made somewhat whole. That would be through negotiation between the city and the district. The, in the meantime, the city has no obligation to accept the property. You don't have to accept the property until you decide when it's at your advantage to accept the property. In the meantime, the school district owns the property, maintains the property, pays the insurance, et cetera. They would like to quit doing that. But the reality is, it's not going to happen overnight. So you would not accept the property until there was funding in place to support the property. How long would that take? A year? Two years? Three years? I don't know. But you have a committee that's willing to work on getting that done. So those are the realities of it. You don't have to accept the property. They don't want it. So that's putting it pretty simple.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Yes, sir, please come forward.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
My name is Ray Solomon. I'm a new resident here a couple of years. Family is interested, kind of all for a long time. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm, I know people involved with the project, I'm not in any form or way involved with this project. I'm doing it as a, as a friend of the community. I've served my entire life with them doing major projects. One cannot do a project or go out and talk to people about getting something done unless you control the property that you're doing. You can't do it. I got a list of ten people right here that I've already reached out to say, hey, you want to do something like that song for us? Sure? Do you control the property? No. As I understand from coming to these meetings, what we need is not a contract because we've got lost on weeds on them a long time. What we need is a simple letter of understanding with the school board to say, if you can do this, we will do that. And so, and that gives the city of Crescent City and whomever you want to delegate the power to talk to people to try to find a solution. But I do this for a living. And if I, the first thing I'm going to say, if I do this thing and deliver, the answer is no. Why? Because it's controlled by the school board. If you got, I have control of the school board, uh, you know, giving it to some private people to go around is a fantasy. It can't happen, won't happen. But there are circling people that are interested in thirteen acre, twelve acres of downtown Crescent City. And whether you're going to, whether you're going to control what happens to them or not, it's up to you. And what we're talking about is a letter, it's a memorandum of understanding with people who already agree to what they understand. I don't understand. I mean, I don't get it, but I can help in any way I can. But my perception is that nothing goes forward unless we have a simple memorandum of agreement, not a contract, memorandum of agreement with the school board that says, if this, then that. So if somehow it comes to bite, they have to let us know first and then we deal with it. Those kinds of things, it's a protective. But if you have that kind of control, then you can't talk to people and go and ask for their advice. There's a huge project right here that's going to happen at some point. I'll just go call them and say, hey, can I ask your advice, please? Who got this and how are we going to deal with it? You got any ideas? And you don't think he's going to bend over backwards and make sure that happens correctly? First thing he's going to say is, can you speak for the project? No. So, thank you very much for my time, your time. But the point is, I think that to extend these people is an intelligent thing to do. And the first charge should be figure out a way to get the memorandum of agreement done. And you have to rock crowdfunding to get the money, to get a memorandum of agreement. We can, it's not a lot of money to get a memorandum of letter of agreement. Thank you very much.
One more comment. While we're in negotiation with partnerships, you would be accepting it only at your discretion. In the meantime, we would be going to the school district saying, we would like permission to do this, this, and this. And they would either give it to us or not. That's the way the process would work. That would be the function of our, of the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Do we have any other speakers? You say your name and I know that you are.
My name is Will Cheyote of Wonderful Wolf Park Street. This, uh, memorandum of understanding, there's no reason why, well, first of all, let me back up a little. I haven't heard anybody say, if we take one building at a time to renovate, I heard a figure of one point five million dollars to do that. This group putting together a, um, brokering a green, a agreement as to how we're going to finance that. The, the, this group can do that. You could, and you could go, you could approach the, um, the school district and say, on your own, as private concerned citizens, on behalf of the historical society, stating that, um, if we do, if this, if the school board wants to do this, the city can do this, you can broker a deal, then come back to the city and say, the, the, they're willing to issue, what is it, a memorandum of understanding? Letter of understanding. And then, if we can figure out a way to get this financed, then we can proceed that way. And there's no reason why this group, as a private group or if you wanted to form a 501(c)(3) or whatever group you want to do, you can broker a deal, come back to the city, be a playing partner and figure out ways to, how, as a group, and it could be, it could be an understanding between the, um, Pute County, the school district, the city of Crescent City, and this other private group. They could all be playing partners and then we'd share in the cost of that. Because right now, from what I'm hearing, we're, we're not even going to have enough money to pay our basic bills. And you're talking about us going out and financing one point five million dollars. We just can't afford it. So if you can, if you can broker a deal and figure out how we can do this thing, I'm all ears, I'm all, I'm all for it. I'm all for the development of that. So, um, I'm just not buying a lot of the arguments that I'm hearing. And there's, there's another way to go about this and I, this group doesn't seem to want to do that. So, anyway, that's, that's my say.
Do we have any other speakers?
Tracy Asart, One More Landmark Prospect. I live closer to this school than anybody here that I've been recognized.
No, you...
I'm closer than you.
Okay.
It, uh, I am concerned about this monstrosity sitting there, open. I'm very concerned about how the city would go about taking it over. I agree with Will that if a private group were formed, the whole point is you would make the decisions. You wouldn't have to ask for permission. Please put your hand in your head, BJ. Every time you disagree, it's just...
One or more may have, yes.
It's an individual high school.
Okay.
That's where I appeal.
Okay.
That's where I appeal.
Right now, you want authority that you don't have as a committee. You're not elected as this committee. You're not even appointed as a board. You're a, and just strictly an advisor, really, and that's the whole point. You can't go negotiate on behalf of the city. But if you had your own group, you could go negotiate. And as Will pointed out, you might find more partners than just the city. I am not happy that we have a commissioner that has been a very big part of this committee. Now, I've asked, I've been told, oh, no, this is okay. Well, it's not okay. It is not okay that we have one commissioner that was to be a liaison and has been a whole part of this committee and wants to now negotiate as the committee. But if it was private and you had your own group, no, you probably wouldn't be meeting at City Hall. You'd probably be meeting at McDonald's or Wendy's and having coffee. You'd be doing the same thing. And you could go as a group to talk to these people about raising money or you could go individually, however you chose. But the point is, there's no understanding and we don't know that the school wants the city to have this. You have never, none of you have talked to the school board. The school board makes the decision. Those five people make the decisions. The other concern is there are new laws that one new law was just signed in this, this month about what happens with schools when they are occupied anymore. And I'm sure that there are several others that are on the books. They can't just decide, oh, this is where we want it to go. You know, charter schools now have to write a first refusal. And when you're talking to twelve-acre campus, it doesn't matter that there's nobody right here that might want it. Somebody else might decide they want it. Well, state law is, the school board wouldn't have any choice. But no one has ever talked to the school board in the past year. And I know that from talking to the chairman of the school board. We don't have the money, it's very obvious. And it isn't just going to appear. It's time to grow up. If you really think that you're that talented, you have all this to offer, then get together and do it on your own.
Do we have any other speakers? I'm standing.
Pat Maiden, Two O Two Oleander. I want to speak again, you know, my feelings about this, but... And I'm not a business person, but it seems to me that without the interest of the city... and I'm not a business person, but it seems to me that without the interest of the city committee can't, now, people aren't gonna wanna deal with some private citizens. And the school board is gonna look at them and say, oh, man, big bucks. And the city has the negotiating power and the, you know, it's your property in a sense, that, that the committee doesn't have. They are a private committee with hopefully ideas and investors. But I don't think investors are gonna talk to them unless they have some legal connection to the government. That's all I'm gonna say.
Hi, my name is Rick Bowles. I live at One O Nine Shell Harbor Way, Satsugen. I'm here to express my support for the VRC and their efforts to acquire the school and to not let them sunset. Some points to consider. There's been a lot of talk about money. The VRC, as, as they've said, is voluntary. They have produced a 265-page report for free. Now, you know, if you would have gone to an outside consultant, that would probably cost $30,000, $40,000. They live out of town, they don't know the town. The VRC is prominent people that knows the inner works of Crescent City. They are a gift, and we should take advantage of them. Do not let them sunset, please do not sunset the VRC. My second point. On the last city commission meeting, there were probably 15 people present here that waited four and a half hours to speak, or to, to show up. They waited four and a half hours. There was, and that was in support of the VRC. There was one person who spoke out against them. Your policy should reflect the, the interest of the, of the population you serve. There has been overwhelming support, at least here, for the VRC to continue. Do not vote to sunset them. And lastly, acquiring the school provides a golden opportunity for the future of Crescent City. It will put you in the driver's seat by owning the property. You will be in control of what goes there. Whether you have to save, whether you wanna save five buildings, or one building, or no buildings, you are in control. The option is, like Lisa had said, somebody could come in, buy the property, you know, decide it like an RV park. You oppose the RV park, and they say, well, you know what? We think we, we, we should get an exemption or something, we're gonna sue you. You know, big law is to, you know, I think the number one priority should be, get the, own this land, acquire this land. It sounds like they want it to be given, they want to give it to you. So so I think the VRC should be allowed to continue to negotiate with the prospects of, of getting this property. So please consider to allow them to continue, control the destiny of Crescent City, and do not vote to sunset them. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Bowles just one question? Mr. Bowles, you gave your residence address. Do you not own the property on Central Avenue?
I do, through 38 Central.
Right, and that, you just bought Brick Bank Building on the corner.
Right.
So you do own property in Crescent City?
Right.
Do we have any other speakers? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment at this time. Okay, we have a proper motion and a second on the table. Do we have any further discussion, Commissioner?
I just want to say that I think we should minimize risk to the city. I think Ms. Bowles made a very good point. We don't know what's gonna happen to that property. The gym could be gone. The field could be gone. We, if we don't exert our authority and our responsibility for planning and zoning, I think it's going to cost us a lot more in the future. And also, Mayor, I do have a question. I mean, for the commission. So it is in our prior strategic plan to acquire this school. Our, we paid $100,000 for the CRA plan. That includes the central, the area where the school is. And it laid out the will, we had workshops. The community expression was that that should be a community center. I do want to clarify, I heard you say a couple meetings ago when the REG report was submitted, that you would like a copy of it provided to Terry Suggs, that county administrator. And I've been wanting to get the opportunity to ask you why you asked that to be done.
Why did I ask that to be done? Because you had shown interest also.
Okay, here you are.
That the county had, that
Okay, well, you're, here you are.
That the county had
Your mind sounds so down in here.
The county had shown interest, that there was possibility. This was some time ago.
Okay.
And so I told Soli that when we got the report, that we would make sure that they got a copy of it.
Well, it seems to me that we should all be on the same page. And did the city manager at the time know about this? Or was this just discussion that you had with?
No, I met with Mr. Dodge. JR Newbold actually asked us to do it. And so Mr. Dodge and Michael and Terry Suggs, Jared Grimes, and Julian Young. And who else was there, Mr. Dodge?
Someone from the county fire department, department.
Uh, okay. It was J. Park, that was Mr. Dodge. Asked us to talk to us up at that time. So I went with, I, we went to, they, JR, with JR Newbold as the county commissioner. And that was when they had the discussion, and quite honestly, that possibly they could, they could at some point get involved in this as well. And they showed interest because they have a county building here. I mean, that they rent from us. And so, yeah. So you have some, is there a point you wanna make with that?
Well, yes. One thing, I think we should all have the same information. I think that's very helpful. I think we should
That goes every way, that goes both ways. Okay. It does, I mean, I'm just saying.
I'm sorry. When, when I, when I go to a meeting, I try to report to the commission. If there's not time in the meeting, which there usually isn't, I write something up, and that goes.
Well, I didn't know that it was, I mean, it was not a secret. It was, there was no secret to it. It was, I thought it was, I mean, when you meet with that group of people, that somebody's gonna talk about it. I didn't see, it was just an exploratory. They wanted to, JR Newbold, I think he was trying to work on this to see if they could get the county somehow or another involved in it.
Right, well
And so courtesy.
Okay, but that, so our goal, so here's our goal, our strategic plan, it's in our CRA plan, to, to acquire this. And I'm, I think that that is a good goal. I think that we could, as the city, we could bring about a good result economically. We could bring about a good result socially for our young people, for our community. When we spent $100,000 on ARS consultants to do that master CRA plan, that was, that was something the public came up with. The most likely way for us to make that happen, and the most effective way for us to preserve the buildings, and I'm, is for us to keep going the way we've been going. Otherwise, we are at risk of ceding what should be our control for the benefit of our seniors, our youth, everybody else, including ourselves, into pretty dangerous and unknown territory. So does it cost us anything? The opportunity cost small. What it would, what it would cost us, Mr. Bowles said, if somebody came in and wanted to do something that was negative. There's, we have no long-term plan for that right now. I mean, just to, just to change our comp plan right now would cost us money. So anyway, I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's cheaper. I think it would have the most opportunity to benefit the Main Street area, to benefit the young people, old people, everybody. And I think, I think if we don't do this, we're, we're not, we're not really doing the job that is our top, that's planned.
That's your opinion.
And, and so
Okay, so we have, we, we currently have a proper motion and a second. I ask you to do, so no further discussion, I ask you to do a
I just have a lot more things to say.
Yes, and then that's it?
Yes. We do have a vision, okay, for Crescent City. We've had that vision for, ever since I've been commissioner, I believe, we put together. And the other, yeah, we put the school on, I think just last year, we thought that would be a great thing. And I was the one that suggested we do it. Come to find out, I didn't realize how difficult it would be to get grants and things because the state owns it. And so it's not a matter of just asking for all this stuff very easily, but that's neither here nor there. Part of that vision also included the blue moon lodge. And how many other things that that vision included that hasn't been done, you know, so far. And it's been a while. There's a, there's a lot of things. And so people gotta go back and take a look at all those things that have not been accomplished. And a lot of that would be almost considered low-hanging fruit compared to this project. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm gonna ask Matt, if you please do a roll call.
Commissioner Burton?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
Nay.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Nay.
Thank you, everyone, for your service. Please note, in no way have we said, they've not approached us. And I expect, I still expect that, I know all of your passions about this, and please come back to us for your nominations.
I need the re-turn.
Um, I still, we still have some, some, a couple of other things. So you have a motion to adjourn. We have two issues I know on, so do you have a stand next?
Well, I asked for it this year to be on the agenda, which the manager would think was
So, um, your motion failed for the last second. So I'm gonna go ahead and, we've got two things. I know, I know I have a lot of things, and I think you asked, and I have Wind Dixie. I've got some information on Wind Dixie as well, so if you want to go back to that.
I don't know what information you have.
Oh, no, you have, I know what information you have, but you said that you wanted to talk, you asked him to put it on the agenda. But please share it with
Well, I mean, I did
So I don't know what it was.
Okay, well, I was hoping actually at the last meeting, or whatever meeting after the special meeting, that you would let us know if there was an update. But we had a little meeting that went until 11 o'clock, we didn't get an update. So I contacted the chamber and Miss Papless.
The president, yeah.
Right, just so a brief summary of this. And she had sent me some information, but it wasn't, I don't know if, one of it was a B card with somebody to contact, and it wasn't really shared, I mean, it didn't, she didn't mean that.
She sent me information as well, and it doesn't really apply to this.
Right, but, well, what she did say is, she said that they, that she had talked to you and that the chamber had looked into it, and that she did not think that there was yet a resolution on whether the store here was going to be converted. And the chamber had identified the people who would be the correct decision-makers to talk to. And what I really wanted to follow up on was, when you reported your meeting with Miss Papless, you said, she said there could be some incentives, we could have something to offer them. So I asked her, I said, what would they be? And she said, well, you could offer a tax rebate. And as well, I asked her about intangibles. For example, just to sit down with her, the decision-maker bar, to find out what they're basing that decision on, to make sure that they have the correct information to, you know, that they're, they don't have any misconceptions, and as well. So if we have anything to add to that about our management plans at Crescent City, how we plan to promote ourselves, to bring revitalization back, and how they would, how Wind Dixie would fit into that. And as well, just as we said in the resolution that we adopted, that we would like to work with that, would be an opportunity to ask them, what could we do to help continue this as a, as a full-service store? So I found out, she said the main incentive would be a term incentive. And then the others would be intangibles, and we could have an exchange of information. And she said, obviously, there's no guarantee of success, but she did have the contact information. She said the chamber could help us plan our meeting. And she said it does not hurt to make
Well, we, so ended in the store, that they are well aware that we are not happy about this, about this conversion. So both Aldi has been in, and Southeastern Grocery, and they've been in together. And so they've acknowledged that. I did reach out to Representative Sapp, he was on vacation, he got back last week. I spoke to his legislative aide and provided her with a copy of the resolution just to see if we could talk to him about it, if he had any suggestions that he could share with us. Also, I believe this is what's happened in some other communities, is that there's a petition. And you could have resident find a petition. It's my understanding that Aldi, that if there's anything that Aldi doesn't want to do, they don't want to come into a community where they don't want them, basically, where they don't want them. So I did prepare this for y'all to look at. It is lengthy, but it gets the point across. And so we could put petitions out. Of course, you can't do it at Wind Dixie. But you could put it out at possibly some of our restaurants. And, but you can't do that without the commission's, without the commission's approval of doing so. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I gave you a check, I didn't get it from you. Mayor, I, and, yeah, so, let me, let me just finish for, for a second. But that other rural communities, I think in Georgia and some other areas are kind of doing the same thing where there's a big concern about, about this. So, anyway, I read this, and I, and we could do this, and people could sign it, and we could send it into
You can do it online, too.
Huh?
You can do it online.
And you can do it online, too. I'm not, you're that person, I'm not that person. But I am definitely not that person. It was, we were lucky to get this printed. So that's an option that we have. And also, like I said, talking to Representative Sapp about if, if there's any suggestion he has, or if he has, you know, that, that he could, that he could possibly help us. So that's where, that's where we are right now. They haven't responded back to us, but it's my understanding that they obviously received it, and they're well aware that, that the community has some major concerns.
Have we sent it to La Cota, Pomona Park, Pearson?
Um, I don't think, I don't, I don't know if we sent it to
Let me just follow these.
Yeah, I thought we sent, I thought we did. Thought we sent it to the other ones, I don't know if we sent it to Pearson, but I think it was Pearson.
I know Pomona Park had it.
Yeah, and I think La Cota had it, too. And I'll get it to Pearson, we can get it to Pearson. Because I included that in here, Northwest Fallujah. Because I included them in here, Northwest Fallujah. Because so many of them-
Yes.
Come here from there rather than go the other direction. So we would lose, we would lose-
A lot of traffic.
A lot of traffic.
Mayor, I think I told you, somebody I talked to on the phone, with customer service at the company, um, we had, she was waiting for her computer. She told me, she resides in Amster. And she was asking, "Council Crescent City, Wind Dixie is my store."
Yeah.
And that's a good height of weight. So my recommendation would be, and obviously, if you do a petition, um, and this looks like a very nice one and very civil with-
It's lengthy, it's civil, but it's lengthy, but at least it gives them the-
Yeah, it's lengthy. Right.
And then they would sign on the, we'd have pages for them to sign.
Of course, it's lengthy. Who wrote it?
Okay, no, not me.
Believe it or not, I'm sure you did. I'll take a, I'll take full, full run about it. I'll take full run about it, there's a lot to be said.
It, it seems very complete, like the resolution. My feeling about this is, um, given the economic stakes, that we should pursue every avenue. I think the petition is lovely and we should even, if we did it online, we could ask people to copy us. I mean, would this go directly to them?
Yeah, we'd send it directly to them.
But I'm saying, would we know how many petitions were being-
If you send it over, with our network, it tells you, and then you can put the people's app, the addresses that you want it to go to.
Paper. I mean, I guess the details would have to be worked out. But I, I think this sounds great. I would like to have it so that the city would know how much-
How much feedback they're getting from it, so, yeah.
Yes. Well, and also how much support there is for our idea. And I'm sure we hear from people who don't support the petition. But as well, I, I really think, um-
They probably wouldn't sign it.
Well, no, but I'm saying a little, a little here, just, anyway, I would like to know. I think that's a great idea. I think Ms. Papless really encouraged a one-on-one meeting. And I think there's, um, a big difference between, I mean, the resolution, got the ball rolling. There's nothing like a one-on-one meeting, as you know. And that way, um, we could get information from them. And if they have any misconceptions about the community, we could bring forward, um, the, what we think is the correct information. And anyway, so I, and she said, time is of the essence. So I would like to see us move forward with a one-on-one meeting, if we can get it, with the people that the chambers identified.
Well, I think it's more, it is more who, we've got the, we've got the con, we have the contacts. Yeah, we have the contacts. And, and we were hoping to hear back from them, but we haven't heard anything back. And I've spoken to Larry about setting up a meeting for us. They had him in the store and, and he, he didn't want me to- He didn't want me to come on board, because I'm like, I'm not that way, no, no, no.
What, and maybe, maybe a planned meeting would be better.
Yeah, I understand. I agree. No, and I agree, and I, I talked to Larry about that too, about, you know, us, us setting up and going. So I think that's the next step. In the meantime, we could do petition and tell, tell, so they'll meet with us.
Are we giving them? I mean, because this really is a little off the mark for a mission meeting, don't you think?
No, because we had to get it, we had to get approval, we can't do this. And that's, Lord, goodness knows, I'm not gonna do this on my own, so. And I just wanted to make sure, and when we speak, but, no, because when we speak, we as commissioners, when we speak, people feel like that we're speaking for the entire commission. And so, um, I always try to be very careful. I know all of us try to be very careful, that when we speak, that we're not speaking, you know.
Why you should say that?
Well, I do too, that doesn't mean that they, so anyway, I need, I need the commission to, to decide whether or not they're willing, they're okay with us doing this.
So are we taking a vote, is that what you're saying? Or also is it making a motion for a motion?
Yeah.
Um, I would thought we could go ahead and circulate the petition on move on our work as well as in paper.
Okay.
I don't, because I'm-
See you in a second.
Stay in a second.
A motion and a second, do we have any other discussion? None. Y'all do a roll call for us, we get this lead on.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner Lori?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Nay.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Um, that was more beer there.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I would, I would also like to move that the commission, okay, that the commission authorize you to set up a one-on-one meeting with the decision-makers. Um, and a second, preferably, preferably with the assistance, uh, any assistance that the chamber can give us.
One second now.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? But none. Do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Burton?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lori?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor, just a one question.
Yeah.
In this very complicated, um, corporate ownership issue for this thing. So who right now does SE Grocers still own the Wind Dixie?
No.
Always owns the Wind Dixie.
Always owns the Wind Dixie. And so what they've agreed is, I believe it's a hundred and seventy. So Wind Dixie is Southeastern Grocers with the, has created a consortium. Um, one of them that was another group that was trying to buy, that was turned down by, um, the federal trade, said they couldn't do that. They've combined with them and I think a hundred and seventy, they're trying to get back. They're trying to, to get back from Aldi.
The consortium?
Yes.
Okay.
And through Southeastern Grocers though, is they had, they're relieved, they're at least moving on that.
So basically, because I certainly don't want to make us worse off.
Yes.
Um, I would not, well, I guess I would-
But Aldi does, Aldi does it.
So Aldi owns it. So essentially, the people that you would be going to talk to would be-
Aldi and Southeastern Grocers.
Both of them.
Yeah.
And the idea is, please include us in the, you the store selling back.
In an outlet. Right, exactly.
Just wanted to make, make sure I got that.
So I do want to bring, I know everybody's eager to go, but we, we do have an issue. And Commissioner DeVito brought it up at the last meeting. We've got the dogs, they're on Clements. Um, yesterday, Commissioner Moore, um, referred a gentleman to me and I spoke to him last night. Um, four of the dogs, um, basically went after, um, one of our elder residents. They were there on Clements yesterday. One of them got behind her. I believe three of them were in front of her. Um, she was able to, she had, her son didn't know if she had pain or something. But anyway, she was going to check her mail and she was able to yell and scream and fight them off and, or, or kind of make them- And, um, another gentleman came out and got the dogs, moved on, moved back to Roger's house and got her home safely. Um, sheriff's office was called, sheriff's three deputies went out. Um, we, we have got to, and, and I don't know if city itself, we have beat this thing till it's dead. But we gotta figure something out, that either we take this by the reins and we do it ourselves. But deputies basically said they didn't have, you know, what were they, what should they do? The dog did not bite her. And I guess there's, the dog has to bite somebody, I know.
No, not under our ordinance.
Well, not under our ordinance. But then they talked to animal control, we talked to animal control yesterday. I put a call into animal control first thing this morning, I've yet to hear back from her. Um, I did speak to, um, Clement County and Captain Asbury, I've sent this out to Captain Asbury. But she in the meantime is concerned about going to our house. I asked, um, Mr. Martin if he would please, um, have Pam look into it today. But, you know, we can't, there's, there's one thing when there's one dog, right? That's scary enough. Four dogs in a pack is dangerous. We have cited him before, I believe he paid, what, a hundred dollars? Commissioner Burton, you were involved in that, I think with-
I don't, I don't recall the payment.
He did, he came in and he paid, it was, I believe it was a hundred dollars. And, um, and then things were very quiet for some times, but I, for some time, but I guess it's, it's come back up and, and, you know, I- Mayor, I'll just-
Was this a hundred dollars for, is her?
Off the leash, off the leash. And I, I don't- Well, we don't know. Pam said she didn't write it, so it must have been the sheriff's office that wrote it, because my thought Pam wrote-
She wrote back and said it was a few years ago, it was not her. And I do have the cabinet board, she actually just emailed over, so I will send that over to each and every one of you.
Well, this is the bottom line for pack dogs. It was pack dogs that killed Pam Rock.
Yes.
It was pack dogs that sent an elderly woman over in the same area, over chance, mauled within an inch of her life, they pulled her ear off, they, they ripped her treads. It's amazing that she was not dead. The, it's just, I think, chance. And those packs, the pack of dogs that killed Pam Rock, had been reported several times. That owner had even asked for them to be given up. Our ordinance says that animals are to be under, on leash if they're out in public. This is a pack of dogs. I do not understand why animal control, number one, I don't understand why they don't come get these dogs. They were in the public right away, is that they were in the-
Yeah, they were out there.
Okay, I think it is just a miracle that nothing awful happened. And you know, it's, a friend of mine was bitten by one dog. If you're a person on blood thinners or if you're a small child, one bite is not- So I don't understand, given the history of packs of dogs in Clement County, why animal control will not get those dogs. At a minimum, is it not possible for the sheriff and Pam to go call on the owner of those dogs immediately?
That's what I'm hoping, that's what I was hoping was gonna happen this afternoon. Um, Representative Staff, and I know the county right now is talking, that they're asking for a, an interpretation. Um, he had legislation, the Pam legislation, that he had, are you all familiar with that?
Yeah, and it doesn't, that-
It doesn't-
They will not touch this situation.
And, and, you know, a dog has to bite somebody. It has to bite somebody, so while he thought he was helping, um, it's still not as strong as what we need to help, to help us. But I just wanted to make sure, um, that, you know, Commissioner Moore, thank you so much for, for, you know, for looking into this. And he was extremely, he was very concerned. She, of course, is, is upset because now she feels like she can't go out and check her mail.
Which is kind of right.
And, you know, you can only imagine the terror that somebody goes through in that kind of a situation. And she could only think about what happened, they were interlocking, so.
Is the, the online, does it keep the dogs in it? If it just lets them know? I mean, shouldn't we, shouldn't they? I, I don't know how, or ministry, but it seems like animal control should be able to take those animals.
Well, and animal control, again, I got that report too, to animal control, but, you know, I think they can house- Commissioner Burton, I think you're more familiar, is it eighty? Eighty dogs, and right now they have over two hundred.
They have seven eighty because they have no kill, um, shelter and, um, and they don't know how to adopt them out.
They're over capacity, they're over capacity. And when you get an aggressive dog, it's, you know, I don't know. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure the commission is aware of this and we will, um, I guess, continue to- But I think that as part of our discussions with the sheriff's office, Mr. Martin, um, with his contract, that we're going to have to, um, to talk to him about.
It's already on the notice.
And, and the other problem is, is if you write on the citation, you've gotta have a judge that will enforce that citation. And right now, we've got, I know one judge that doesn't hear those, another judge, I've heard conflicting that she will or that she won't, um, hear those. And then what do you do? You don't, there's not really any teeth, what do you attach it to? I, I, I've been told, you can attach it to their driver's license. Um, you know, what do you attach that to? So there has to be a solution somewhere, but I, I don't know that there is.
But first of all, just going to lay the groundwork, I think they need to get a citation. Even if we have nothing, even if we don't have a way to take them to court, between now and the next four months, if there is a citation, maybe we'll find a way to take them to court. And one of my questions, um, y'all probably saw another from Attorney Holmes saying how we couldn't enforce our ordinances. He said the judges and Polacka would then, I think were the seventh circuit?
Seventh.
Yeah, seventh circuit. Um, my question was going to be for, um, our city manager and Attorney Holmes. Is this common in all judicial circuits? That the judges will not enforce county ordinances? Or is it just, um, our circuit because we have a serious need? We're, we're a small county, we're a poor county. I don't think we are, it would be very difficult for us right now to hire a home hearing officer. Um, maybe we'll have to do that, but I would really like to know why the judge is refusing to enforce ordinances, especially ones that have to do with liability saving. So that's my question being that.
Good question, thank you. Do they have anything else?
No.
Okay, but then, uh, now the motion to adjourn.
Still moved, that we adjourned.
Okay, do I have a second? So you have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.